Have they done down there? It's eight thirty. I'd like to call a county commission meeting today, Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021. The Pledge of Allegiance. Good morning. Invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Is there anybody here today? Hearing none. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any additions or corrections?
No, I don't have anything today.
We noted Dan is here today. Instead of Ben. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poll the same sign. Motion carried. Consent agenda items. Do I have a motion approved? There's approval of minutes, approval of travel requests, approval of personal action notices, approval of cellular authorizations, and approval of the human services report.
Move approval.
We have a motion in a second. Any additions or corrections here, Stacy?
No.
Hearing none. Call the roll poll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to routine business. Approval of the claims. Have a motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any additions here?
The, I handed out the March cellphone list. This is just the same list that it's approved every month, but it didn't make it into the packet this time. But it handed it out this morning.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Bartley? Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Department head reports. Brian?
A little update here on the Bruce and Columns report. Crane has moved as of yesterday to the south side of the structure to begin work on that end and riprap placement this week on the north end to finish up that before the pre-stress girders are going to be set. So we're staying right in schedule there with the nice weather we've had. And as of Thursday, the Department of Transportation that, I don't know if we can focus in on this sheet or if you have it pulled up, Stacy. We applied for three grants and we were awarded two. And we got it right in there. So we applied for three, we were awarded two. Looks like we were just outside the point scale there. Like, looks like about fifty percent DOT big score was the cutoff. So roughly about one point three million we were awarded. And the first structure that you see on the list is over on County Road 27. And that's for a total of about nine hundred and forty-three thousand. And the second one was just south of Aurora. And that is on a township road. We were awarded about three hundred and ninety-one thousand there. And the third one we applied for was just two point seven north of Bushnell. So, and we were just outside the points on that. So I couldn't get this in ready report because I didn't, they didn't meet until Thursday. We got this Thursday afternoon. So is there any questions on that? So just to get you guys' update on that. We were successful on two. Thanks.
Thank you. Lori?
Well, our townships are working on their packets and they didn't have their annual meeting this year. So a lot of questions are coming to the office. So the phone has been really busy with that. Otherwise, work is just continuing with the legislative audit. We're working on switching over to the cash basis, finishing up the annual report. And we're still working on getting the cellphone payments to check for, or out of check form and into direct deposit. So that's kind of the lowdown of what's been happening. The girls up front have been really busy with renewals and carrying on.
You want to do your finance?
Might as well.
Okay.
At each of your spots, you'll find with the finance officers' report, a new fund balance sheet. Commissioner Pierce kind of thought it would be helpful for you guys to see last year's January compared to this January with some of those funds. There are some corrections made on there with the 207911 fund. That fund and the domestic abuse fund are just, they're in the negative because of a continuation of a mistake made last year where I can only guess what happened was perhaps they took the fund balance. Every fall, it's determined we can only pay out so much out of a fund because of what we bring in. We don't want to overpay. But the fund balance is set maybe higher than what we bring in. And we can, I can only assume that perhaps in determining that number, the fund balance was accidentally looked at, the budget balance, you know, at the beginning, instead of what was actually brought in. So we overpaid on those. So that will correct itself. The 301 county building, the number is different than originally given to you. And I have no clue where I got that original number. So that's me. Any other questions on that?
On, on the copy of the 2021 one that was in the packet, it had that assigned fund balance assigned to the courthouse building project. That is not where it goes. Is that correct?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So it goes, it goes back.
You've got the corrected one on your desk there this morning.
And then, I can't remember. That's restricted money because that money came from where? What's the restriction that's on that money?
It's restricted because it's in the building fund. It's restricted for building fund purposes.
Okay. So that didn't, and all of our tax levy stuff on the 304 fund, that six point nine million, that is that the money that?
So that's, so fund balance is a little bit confusing. And I told Lori, we maybe need to sit down and visit with Jeff about that with legislative audit to get some clarification. But at year end, when you don't spend your expense budget, that dollar amount rolls into fund balance minus, plus or minus your revenues, right? So last year, we had budgeted the seven point four million dollars, anticipating that we were going to spend that in case we, but that's the bond amount essentially. And then that provide us with, provided us with an expense, expense budget as bills started coming in last year. Well, we didn't get to the project until October, November of last year. So that basically is budget that went unspent at year end last year that rolled into fund balance. It's just budget authority that went unspent. So we need to get some clarification because in this special fund, it's a little bit different than your general fund or your highway fund because eventually that's gonna, you know, we need to spend that down. So I, we need to visit with Jeff to see it that that's, you know, correctly reported that way. I think it is. But it just is a little bit, it's higher than what it would normally be because we just didn't have the project in start until at year end last year. So it's basically unspent budget authority is what that is.
So I thought the funds that we've been collecting for the last three years approximately on our tax levy for the jail
Yes. And that's, that's included in that.
That's included.
Yes. Some of that is included in that because you take your expense minus your revenue to get your fund balance or, so.
How much of that six point nine million is tax levy then? Do we know that?
We would have to go back in. I think that we could find out and see. I don't know. It doesn't show, it, it wouldn't show on the fund balance sheet. So I'd have to go and research that to see exactly what we've brought in. It's been about, give or take, five hundred thousand dollars a year since twenty, starting in twenty eighteen, I believe, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. So probably, you know, a million and a half of revenue has been brought in, give or take on the, on the tax side. I think I have that on, actually.
I think I gave you a sheet on that. And so where does our seven million on our bond? We've received that money, right?
Yes.
Where does that show? That doesn't show in fund balance anywhere. Is that right?
Correct.
So that's another seven million that we have set aside for the jail in addition to this seven million.
But this seven million really isn't, you're not able to spend this because this is budget authority that went unspent. It's not cash. So that's why it's a little bit different with this particular project fund rather than when it's the other, the other, the other funds. So we need to get some clarification on that exactly. But no, this is not money that we have set aside now for the project necessarily. I'm trying to.
Isn't this the bond funds that's in here?
No.
It does. It includes the bond funds. But to say, I mean, you could see that as money set aside for the bond, I suppose. And I just, I just need to wrap my head around it because I haven't had a chance to do that.
I, I think Jeff can probably give us a better explanation and we can bring that to you next time.
But, so if I'm understanding this correctly, that 304 restricted fund balance for projects is the combination of the taxes that have been levied and collected and our bond as budget authority, not as cash on hand, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. The next thing is the yearly investment policy transfers. Those are all done and put away. Everything worked out good. I did include this year the charts of indebtedness that I normally do for the annual report, just kind of for your, your, your information on the principal and interest that you're paying on those bonds when they are paid off. Commissioner Pierce had asked about the early payoff on the courthouse construction bond. Early payoff on that would be after our December 22nd payment. So early 2023, we could pay that early in 2023. I do not have the payoff amount. They didn't have time to get back to me on that. But it can be paid off early. The next thing was the grant. It's a one-year grant between the South Dakota Department of Corrections Council for Juvenile Services and the Boys and Girls Club. Brookings County is the sub-recipient of that grant. And so I felt it pertinent to show you guys what bills are being paid out for that grant, considering it's a one-year grant with the opportunity to renew it, just so you guys are aware of what's happening with that. And as bills go in and payment gets made, I'll give you information on that. And then we had the Register of Deeds Office had a few minor calculation errors. The first one was an incorrection, a correct, oh my goodness, incorrect calculation of marriage fees. It was reported correctly in the finance office from the Register of Deeds and the money was correct. It was just an error on the sheet presented to you. The same with correction number two. It was just an incorrect calculation of general fees. Both, both were just errors on the statement that you get correct money was reported in. And that's all I have. Any questions on any of it?
Mr. Pierce?
Could we go back to the bond and the courthouse for a minute?
Yes.
So we had considerable conversation with that. Budget timer, if it was at this time of the year. And, and we talked about that. And it was my understanding at that time that that bond was going to be paid off in 23. But, but now I think what you're saying is that's when we could do early payment.
That would be early. Otherwise, it's 2029.
Mm-hmm. And those sheets that Lori put in the packet that show the bond, we've, I don't think we've ever seen those before. I don't recall ever seeing those sheets. And I just wanted to thank you for putting those in there. And I think that's an important thing that, that we see that kind of regularly, particularly with that big seven million dollar bond.
Right.
So we can watch what's going on with that. But once I read that and then I started looking and you and I had this conversation. So the money we owe on the bonds, the seven million for the jail and the approximately a million dollars for the courthouse, they don't show up in our financial documents. Our indebtedness does not show up anywhere in our financial reports. I have a concern about that. And, and I don't know if you had a chance to look at that and see if there's some way we can remedy that so that the money we owe shows up on the reports that we're getting?
Okay. I can look into that.
It just seems to me that when we're looking at, for example, our fund balance and, and whatever forms that we're getting that shows the money that we got, we should also know the money that we owe. And that eight million dollars doesn't show up anywhere when we look at all of these different financial statements that we're getting.
Any other questions? Thank you. Bob?
Good morning. We had a vaccination clinic for Brookings County. We had over a thousand citizens come through. We had seven hundred and twenty-one hours and forty-three minutes and fifty-one seconds of volunteer time coming out of Brookings County itself. That's over one month worth of, of time in one day to put one thousand people through to get their vaccinations. And I've heard nothing but positive feedback from the event. We did have visitors come down from Collington County, Hamlin County, and Dole County because they're, they're looking at doing the same type of thing up in Watertown. So they came down to observe what we was doing. South Dakota Office of Emergency Management Regional Coordinator Mark Nelson came over and, and had a regional visit with me. And he also toured, toured the facility. And the breakdown of Brookings County had a total of sixty-three hours and fifteen minutes and forty-two seconds of volunteer time. And county development, I had, my office had about twenty and a half hours. The commission department, including everybody, had thirty-six hours and forty-three minutes. And the Veterans Service Office had six hours and twenty-eight minutes of volunteer time. And county commissioners by themselves, not to single them out, they had twenty-one hours and eighteen minutes and forty-six seconds worth of volunteer time. And all the assistance was appreciated. And there'd be more. Of course, this follow-up one is March 25th. And there'd be additional points of dispensing slash vaccination clinics coming up. And I would encourage the public to stay tuned to all the press releases and everything. And as soon as those phone numbers open up, if you, if you want a shot, go ahead and start calling in those, those phone numbers to see if you can't get your, your appointment. The total cost of Brookings County as of right now, I, I don't have a bill in front of me, but they emailed me. They, they said it was going to cost us five hundred and fifty-five dollars for the, the meals that we provided to the volunteers. Besides that, the, the Swiftel Center at this time is waiving fees of one thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars, which would be the use of the Swiftel Center rooms and that. We are going to file a, a claim for the whole amount of one thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. We're going to give that to the Department of Health along with the hours, volunteer hours from the call-in center and see if Department of Health will reimburse the pod in Brookings County, anything else. Obviously, if Brookings, if, if the Department of Health reimburses us for the meals, that will be put into the general fund. I've got to pay it out of my emergency disaster fund. But if, if we get reimbursed, by all means, it would be, be put back into our general fund with a, and, and we'll do the proper paperwork. So you're fully aware of what's going on. But it costs us about one thousand six hundred and ninety dollars to run that operation if we, out of, out of pocket. Okay. Tomorrow, me and Sheriff Stanwick has to go to Yankton. Unfortunately, both of us being as intelligent as we are forgot to put in a travel request. So we will put in a late travel request if it's all right with the board. It's a Homeland Security Grant Application Ranking Meeting. It's being held down at the National Field Archery Association Headquarters, which I think would be interesting to take a look at since we've got our BCOAC here. And it's supposed to be a large enough facility where we can social distance and all that. So is that all right with the board? If, if we do that and I, I submit the travel claim late, we're taking a county vehicle. It's not going to be, be, except gas. Okay. Thank you for that. We got a zoning meeting tonight. We'll actually try and something strange tonight. You know, we've got the call-in number where if a commissioner is out, he called, they call in and, and, well, they asked us to incorporate Zoom into that scenario. So what we're going to do is we're going to have them call Zoom into the back room so they can, they can view the meeting through Zoom. And then we're also going to have them call that call-in number so they get input what they're seeing on the, on the Zoom call. We're going to see how that works.
Who is the they, Bob? When you said they asked?
First, first district. Todd Kayes is the one that requested it. So we'll, we're trying to figure out if it works. And if it does, it does. And if it doesn't, I'll be more than happy to let you know. And we'll, we'll keep working on it until we get, apparently there's some kind of, obviously, we're on YouTube and all that and there's a delay. So they get it on YouTube thirty seconds later. By that time, we might be on to some other topic when they want to say something about what they just saw. So we're, we're trying to see if we can balance the, the two up. It'd be a, a good experiment, I think. We do have citizens already preparing for the spring flooding. I've had people contact me on things such as sandbags. You know, if, if someone needs five or ten sandbags, they're more than welcome to call my office and I'll be more than happy to share with them. If you want thousands of sandbags, you need to contact one of the local big, big, big stores. I don't have that many to give out. But if a, if a homeowner is worried about ten or, or sandbags or so, I don't have the sand available, but I do have the sandbags available. All, all they have to do is call or swing by the office and we'll be more than happy to, to share. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
I do. Sorry.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes, ma'am.
The sand out on the S curve, is that gone?
I guess I haven't inquired with the Highway Department, ma'am.
It's still there. So why can't citizens take sand off that? I thought that's why we put it there.
I presume, yeah, I, like I say, I haven't coordinated with the High, as soon as I talk to the Highway Coordinator, if I have to buy sand to give to them, I'll be more, we'll, we'll set that up.
Okay.
We just had one case, a person came in needing ten sandbags and asked me his sand. And he lived in a, he actually lived in a town that had their own little sand pile. So he, I think he's taken care of, but.
I, I out there, don't, don't we, Brian? One load? So maybe not quite a bit anymore.
Well, I can, I can work with the Highway Superintendent and order more loads and they can come out of my budget and we'll, we'll pay through it through emergency funds. We'll, we'll take care of it now that we know that's a possibility.
Bob, are they anticipating flooding with this snowmelt this week?
They're actually not. Right now, we're real close to a drought. They're hoping that this will, will knock us out of that almost drought category. But yeah, no, all the, all the ninety-day projections show big Sioux down all, all spring. Knock on wood, of course, or plat, whatever it is. Right now, there is no outlook for, for any, any type of major flooding. There'd be some minor flooding, of course, when the, if we get more snow like this. And I do anticipate, unfortunately, there's some more state basketball, something or state events. And I under, from, I've only been here a few years, but from my understanding that there's a state event held like in Rapid City, there's a snowfall come during that time. So there's at least one more of those events. So I imagine you're looking for at least one more pretty good snowfall before the, the winter is over.
Mr. Pierce?
So Bob, I, I just wanted to say to you and, and to the committee that worked on the vaccination day last Thursday, I've heard so many positive remarks from people that were there. You guys did a great job and, and. You guys did a great job and, and everything went smooth. And I, it, is it correct that another date is planned for March 11th or is that not a, a date cert?
Nothing, nothing has been released to the public, ma'am.
Okay.
Once it's, once it's publicly released, I'll be more than happy to share that with the whole world.
And I, and I guess my question is, when we have our next date, there were a lot of volunteers and a lot of county employees that, that assisted. Is that something that we want to talk about today? That the next vaccination day, that, that our employees that wanted to volunteer out there can do that? Do we want to have a, a decision on that or, or where are you all at on that? I, I think it did help.
Oh, by all means, anytime we can get a volunteer. And, and you have to realize, our, our county employees were paid, paid people, just like I'm paid. And it's part of my job, or it's separate than about to volunteer. But a lot of other organizations in the county, major organizations allow their people to come in and volunteer too.
I think, Bob, the number was 125 volunteers signed in.
Correct.
To work the event. So it takes a lot of, a lot of folks. And I know Louise Cole kind of ran the volunteer scheduling and putting people in. And, and I think she had some even e- extra people that weren't needed. So we'll get them on the next one.
One, one or two cases, there might have been a person that come in and volunteered and worked for an hour or two. But they still utilized. We didn't have anyone just standing around at the time. What it is, we try to schedule volunteers for four-hour periods. That way, they're being useful or feel that they're being useful. And there was, there might have been a case where someone only volunteered for an hour or so.
And we need to make sure that as, as we have additional events, that the volunteers keep coming.
By all means, yeah. But this is not a one, that was not a one-time event. And March 25th, which is the second vaccination from, from this one, I mean, they're going to keep rolling. We've, we're just into 1D right now. We, then we got 1E and then we go into 2, which is literally everyone 16, age 16 and older. So we anticipate this is going to go on to September, if not farther down the line.
And I, and I guess my question for the commission is, I would recommend that we have a policy that when those dates become, become known, and Casey will know as our PIO, that she, Stacy could send out an email to employees if somebody had the opportunity on their calendar and they wanted to volunteer, that, that, that employees could do that. Do we want to have that standing policy or was that a one-time thing that we did? I, I just think we should maybe talk a little bit about that.
Just want to make sure that the department head is okay with it so we're not shorting help in, in office too.
Exactly.
But I'm, I'm all for if an employee wants to volunteer, that they don't have to take leave to do so.
And so we just authorized Stacy to send out an email to the?
Yeah, you know, I don't know if we need to put it in policy. I think you need to take it by a case-by-case basis of what we consider an emergency or that kind of thing. Obviously, this was. And we allowed our employees to not have to take vacation if they wanted to volunteer. And there's a lot of private businesses that did the same. I know I worked with a couple gentlemen from 3M that 3M allowed them to come and volunteer and not have to take vacation. So, you know, it was, it was done by a lot of private and public there. And the, you know, the volunteers were greatly appreciated. And that was one of the main reasons it went so well because we had so many volunteers. But, you know, I don't know if, if we just want to make it a policy that if we're doing something that, that anybody can do that. I think case-by-case basis would be something that, how we did this one with the consensus of the board allowing, say, yeah, let's do this. So I don't, I don't know.
The only problem is, is I believe, but I could be wrong, that the next date will be before we meet again. So you're saying just do calls around again, which is a little awkward.
Well, I think if, if we send, send an email out, just like we did.
Yes, once, if I may, once, once the date's released, by all means, then we can, we can rock and roll. I just can't say anything right now.
Right.
I mean, I'm, I'm under. And what you have to, what I, what I would request you differentiate, this is actually considered an emergency because there is a FEMA declaration nationwide on the pandemic. So this, you know, and if we have a tornado rip through one of our communities or something like that. If I'm involved, it needs to be in the, into the emergency management field.
I mean, this, this board could change. Next time we have something like this could be 10 years down the road.
Oh, I'm not saying a long-term policy. I, I mean, this month maybe, just for the month of March. If we have some dates, can Stacy send out a email and? Yeah, I didn't, I didn't mean long-term. Sorry.
I, I was thinking you were making policy for long-term that would, there, so, yeah, it doesn't bother me.
Do you think we want to make sure that offices have some sort of staff coverage and make sure it works with the department head? So I would agree that some kind of a hybrid approach like that, rather than a blanket yes, is appropriate?
Okay, I will work with Ms. Stefan and we'll make it work. Anything else? Thank you.
No, thanks, Bob. Dustin? Oops, sorry. We do have a 9 o'clock scheduled agenda item. Jail Progress Report, Chad Nelson, Project Manager from Henry Carlson Construction. Would you like to come forward?
Well, good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Yeah, I'll just kind of. Ben, where we're at and what we got coming on. You mind if I move that so I can talk a little better? Um, I think Stacy gave you guys the updated schedule? Okay.
There were a couple of handouts this morning on this. I did hand out the executive summary and then the, the schedule you sent yesterday. Yeah.
Perfect. So, um, so just kind of looking back and since this is kind of our first update for all of you, I know you're probably familiar, been over to the site and seen what's been going on over the last few months. You know, since we got started back in September and then working through November and December, you know, we had great weather. We were able to do a lot of things without the ground freezing. So that gave us a shot in the arm and got us really going. So we were able to get foundations in, in the scheduled timeframe that we needed them. We were able to do all the utility work essentially out into the street, underneath the building and so forth. And then, and then get a lot of the backfill in, again, prior to it really getting cold and before the, the ground would freeze like it would typically start doing in, in December. So that did help us in the beginning of the project, which set us up to be ready for our pre-cast. Unfortunately, our pre-cast did not cooperate as well as we wanted it to. You know, we had some issues of gathering the color, the stone. I'm sure you're all familiar with, we kind of walked through and talked with the stone people and where we got that. We got that all finalized. With the color, again, looking at the building, we've got, we've got some sections of the pre-cast panels that don't have any stone on them. And then we've got some decorative corner pieces. And then the, the high part that goes around, all that had the stone on it. Gage was able to get all the panels done that did not have the stone on it because we had the color selected and they were able to, able, able to control that within their own facility. However, being the stone was coming from somewhere else, you know, that they were kind of dependent on them as far as when we could get that. And, and the stone company, you know, I think once we gave them, you know, what we needed and they understood, you know, they got after it. But again, with the pan, whoop, with pandemic and stuff, just employees and, and all that, you know, kind of delayed that process a little bit and it took the full six weeks to get it to us. So in return, that kind of delayed gauge of getting the actual pre-cast fabricated with the stone inlaid into it. So kind of going back, we got the original panels without the stone. We got them here, you know, towards the end of January and got those installed. And that allowed us to at least start the steelwork and so forth over the lower roof portion. Because we, we had kicked around and talked with Gage Brothers and the, and the pre-cast installer. And, you know, do we wait until it's all ready or do we try to, you know, do what we can with what we can? And it's not ideal for the installer, but they're, which is Gil Hogan. And they were very accommodating and said, yes, you know, the fact that they didn't have necessarily a lot of work going on with their pre-cast crews, they were allowed, or they were able to come down and at least get that portion done, which again, opened up some work for, for us with our own crews to set the steel and get the bar joists and work on some of that deck. Now, as you've seen, we've got the, the panels with the stone. And all the panels have been made. So everything's coming as the progression of setting it around the building. So we are hoping, you know, by the end of next week, they should be wrapping up that portion. And then we've got our steel guys back already finishing up the lower part, the lower roof, which is the west half of the building. And then by the time we get done with that, you know, we'll be finished setting the east half or the detention area. And then we'll move right into the steel. We've got all the steel sitting over behind the church, so it's all ready to go. So, so although we kind of hit, hit a little bit of a lull, I think our, our progress and momentum is picking up, allowing us to, to get back kind of on schedule. Now, if, if you've had a chance to look at this or roll down to the bottom, I can show you. And we talked a little bit about this at our OAC meeting. We've got, we tried to carry, it'd be on the second page all the way, whoever. That, I just want to talk a little bit about the, the schedule contingency. Because we talked, again, we talked a little bit about this at the OAC meeting. So in, in most projects, we try to anticipate a little bit of delay or, you know, material delays or, or bad weather or, or whatever. We know in South Dakota, we get everything. So, you know, hence our last couple of weeks with our 25 below temperatures. So we, we've used a couple of those days to accommodate some of the work that we were delayed with the pre-cast. And then again, with the, with the cold snap. But again, by being able to do some of that work on that west half, we didn't have to give up all the days and we were still able to get some things done, which, which again, helped us in the big picture of the project. So I don't want to get into too much detail right now with you as far as just walking through each line item. But that's kind of generally what, what's gotten us to this point. And now, kind of looking at where we're at and, and moving forward, some of our big milestones that we're looking at is now that we're covering up that west half, we're getting preparation underneath with some underground plumbing. And then we've got to do some final grade work to get ready for the concrete slabs because that's our next big milestone. Because once the concrete slabs are in, it opens up our masonry walls, which are most of the interior partitions of the building, which in return, the way you build the block walls is all the rough-ins already taking place as you're laying block up. Different from a steel stud wall where you'd frame everything up, then have the electricians and the plumbers come in and rough everything in. And that means putting the components within the walls, the rough-ins. But the way the masonry walls, you've got to build it as they, they put block and build up. So a lot of things will be happening at the same time in order to achieve that, which is good. It'll help, it helps in the overall schedule as well. And then the next big item with the concrete slabs under the detention then is getting prepped and ready for the big detention cells, which right now we're anticipating according to the, the schedule that we've got around that April 22nd. You know, I think that's a Thursday and we talked in the OAC meeting. I'm guessing that means we'll probably actually start that following Monday because to get, these people are coming from Alabama is where these cells are made. They'll want to travel over the weekend and be ready to go that Monday. So it'll probably be that, you know, like the 24th, I think is that Monday. But that'll be our, the, the next big milestone in our, in our track here, which we're all excited. I know, I'm sure some of you are ready to see these cells and what they look like and how they get pushed in. So, um, so that, that, what has to happen with that prep is while we're getting that slab down, there's some shower depressions that we have to line up for the ADA cells because they have a different kind of shower means of being able to roll right in. So we've got to provide a depression. And then that means special placement of the pipe, piping that goes under slab for the plumbing. So there's a lot of prep work that has to take place. But once we get that slab in, again, we talked a little bit at the OAC meeting, we're going to leave one pre-cast panel off on the east side, kind of in the middle, middle and north that is large enough where if we leave that off, we're going to then create a concrete slab outside of the building where they can crane these cell units onto that slab. And then they stack the second one on top and then they push them into the building and then get them positioned. So we'll do that for each stack as they go around. So obviously we'll push it all the way across and then just kind of build around until we get back to the final one that they push in. We get it closed up, we put the pre-cast panel on and then we've, we've got the building basically finished up. So, and all that, like I said, will be happening around the end of April, first part of May. So then we get to that point where we've got the building now completely closed up. We've got the roof over top of it and then we can start all the interior finishes, which, you know, will happen in that May, June, and July timeframe. So that's kind of where we're at and then looking, looking ahead a little bit. You know, along with the schedule comes making sure we're getting all the materials reviewed and ordered and delivered. We are already through the whole submittal process. And when we say submittals, for those that maybe aren't familiar, that's kind of the product data, the paper that we have to submit to BKV, let them review it, make sure each material and each color is what they're expecting us to provide to put into the building. So we've gotten through probably about 90% of those submittals. So we're in real good shape with those as well. We've got a few that were just finished, that related more to the finishes, some paint colors, some carpet, window blinds, you know, just finishes like that, which are typical to be towards the end of that review process. But we're, again, we're sitting in very good shape with that information. And, you know, to again accommodate the schedule that we've got here. So right now, we're feeling very comfortable. I hope we don't get that snowstorm over the state tournament that we were talking about earlier. But we all know that it may show up. And he's right, it typically does. But again, with the warmer weathers, I mean, it sounds like our next couple of weeks are going to be great. So again, perfect timing for us to be doing this work outside. We've got some wood blocking that's going to start up on the metal deck, which then preps it and gets it ready for the roofing material. We're hoping to put the actual, start the roof on the west half, the lo, what we call the lower roof. Again, by the end of March. So, yeah. Real comfortable with where we're at and, and pushing towards our, our final date. We did, we are starting to talk a little bit about when we get to the end, the commissioning process. We had a meeting here last week with the, the outfit that will do the commissioning of all the air handler units and the power, our generator and emergency power. So we'll start plugging that, that information into the schedule. So maybe the next time we meet, I come in, we can maybe talk about that in a little more detail. But, yeah, I think everything's good so far, knock on wood. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, very good.
Okay, we'll go back to department head reports. Dustin?
Good morning, everybody. It's February 16th. We had 112 in the gun range, 121 in the archery range. We were extremely busy this weekend. Outside our normal events that we're doing every week, Rochester Armored Car came in and qualified a few guys. Brookings County Republicans met last Saturday. Big Sioux Bowman have two weeks left in their league. And our gun, our gun league has one week left. Brookings Gun Club, they came in and used the classroom last night. They were in there for a couple hours. A little update on the, a maintenance train did their first routine scheduled maintenance with our service agreement for the year. We installed the duct heater, we got power to it. Today, we're finishing that up, so hopefully that's online today, this afternoon. They also ordered the heater, looking, hopefully, the first part of May. So we'll have to look when we're going to install that for the classroom unit that we got approved last time. We had a board meeting on February 22nd. I thought it went very well. We really dug into the financials. We compared our financials from 2019 to 2020. We talked over our bylaws about making some of those positions a two-year commitment. And then we're working on a mission statement. We hired two new part-timers. As you guys know, they started working. They're, they're in training still, but they're, they're catching on pretty quickly. Another thing I wanted to talk to you guys about, I know I brought up a full-time person a couple meetings ago. I wondered if you guys had any time to, to think about that or had any questions for me or what I needed to do to prove to you guys that we need a full-time person out there? there. I know the first thing comes to mind is budget. So 2020, um, we had $68,000 left in our budget that we didn't use. We were trying to cut on maintenance, um, supplies and materials, anything we possibly could, some marketing. Uh, Stacy and Kristen and I got together and kind of put some numbers, uh, with like an office manager position and it came out to be about $65,945. That's a wage of 18 to 19, um, and then obviously the benefits with a full-time person. Any questions?
Well, we, we discussed this in our, at our outdoor adventure advisory board meeting and went over the numbers, uh, that Dustin came up with too. And, and, uh, we had a good discussion and obviously it's not the outdoor venture advisory board's decision, it's our decision. And, uh, and, and the budget, you know, for this year, we finally got good fin, final numbers and it came in pretty good to where, uh, about $150,000 in the red this year compared to 200 and some last year. Um, so we did a really good job of, of controlling expenses and getting control of that. Um, I, I think where Dustin's coming from for us, and I think the advisory board and Larry was there also, he can chime in too, uh, as a whole was for, uh, considering a full-time, uh, person. I, I think there's a lot, uh, more benefits to it, having somebody consistent to be able to, uh, take on responsibilities consistently, be there consistently compared to part timers. And, and I think that it kind of hit home with me because I've always been kind of a proponent of one full-time and, and rest part timers. But, uh, where Dustin's coming in is the hours that he's putting in, you know, it's not just easy to say, we'll just have a part timer do that or just have a part timer at the, at the front desk be there. And I, and I don't think it's that, that easy. I think you lose a lot of your consistency. We're hiring two more part timers again. We've had two resign. Uh, you just don't have that consistency of, of, uh, another full-time person being there, greeting the people, carrying out tasks that Dustin could ask one person to do, they finally learn it and then they leave and he's got to train somebody else to do it. And so it doesn't cut his hours any shorter by having part timers. And I think that's where my thought has changed on this aspect of it is that i- if, if we need, you know, if he's going to work 70 hours a, a week, uh, you know, there's a reason that he continues, has to, because the part timers can't just fill in as, as they would, just be at the front desk type of thing. Doesn't, doesn't work that way, it seems like. So, um, you know, I've, I've kind of changed my mind on it and we should, I think we should look pretty strongly at it. Uh, you know, the one thing I did say to Dustin is, uh, he also has to let this other person do some work because Dustin's a very hard worker and a very, wants things done a particular way. And, uh, and that's good, but I think he's going to have to learn to let some of the, the strings go a little bit too. And, and if he's willing to do that, I'm willing to consider starting a, a full-time to where, uh, he's not working 70 hours a week. And I think that's where we have to be concerned, that, uh, I don't want him to burn out. I don't want him to, I, I want him to be consistent. I want him to be able to have some consistency at the, the O A C. And I think another part-time employee is the way to go with it. Or, excuse me, another full-time employee is the way to go with it. So I guess I would encourage, you know, on behalf of the advisory board, I think we all kind of came to consensus that we need to think about this pretty strongly.
Yeah, and I, I also support, support it. Uh, there are just certain situations that come up that, uh, um, Dustin has felt that he has to be there. Uh, he's been working some weekends and then during the week, other issues come up. And if he has a qualified person that, uh, would be able to make some of those, uh, um, calls that, uh, not necessarily having to call him. Uh, uh, you ask a lot of a part-time person having to step up and, and make a judgment call on certain issues that arise out there. He's putting a lot of hours in out there. That's, that's what I don't, um, I don't want him to get burned out on 70 hours a week, you know, and 50 hours and such. But, uh, I think it warrants it, uh, the numbers are showing it. Um, uh, he, Dustin being able to go out and promote the facility a little more too, like, uh, with I would having to do some of the stuff at the facility, so.
And Larry brought up a good point too. Uh, you know, Dustin took off for the weekend and, uh, tried to go on a vacation in the hills. And basically the first four hours were putting out fires that the part timer was calling him to make a decision on. And he says, you know, uh, that's not a vacation, you know, and I understand that. But so if there was somebody that was a full-time person that was there and Dustin goes on vacation, that that full-time person can make that decision and, and no, and feels comfortable making that decision. Right now those part timers just don't feel comfortable doing that. When something comes up, what should we do? Because they're not there on a day-to-day basis every day, knowing what should be done or how it should be done. Where if you have a consistent somebody there on a day-to-day basis and knows the history behind, you know, what's going on in the archery range or what's going on in the, in the pistol range, they can make that decision. Then Dustin can go on a vacation without having to answer the phone type of thing. So.
Mr. Barley.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem. I support the idea. The question I guess I have is, is go back to the budget and your discussion. I'm going to assume that when we put one full-time person in, we're going to at least eliminate one part-time position.
So, um, like we've talked about before, uh, you guys don't like, you don't really care how many part timers I have out there. I just need to come up with a number for the public hours that we're open. If it's $25,000, I just need to stay in that budget for part-time labor, which like I talked about, when I'm working the weekends, I, there's still stuff to do on Mondays and Tuesdays that I'm coming in for. And the part timers right now are excellent. I have delegated to them, but I'm nervous that they'll leave and then I have to retrain to where if we had that permanent full-time person, and I want to make it fluid enough to where, hey, if we don't have coverage on a weekend, that other full-timer can help me out and work those weekends as well. So it's just not a nine to five position.
Well, I understand that, yeah. But my, my concern is, is obviously if you're putting on a full-time person, you're going to relieve some responsibilities for hours covered by a part-time person to some degree. And we don't know what those numbers are. We may not until we do this process.
Correct.
Uh, but if we could put together some sort of pro forma, pro forma that would tell us, you know, I anticipate that this many hours for this will eliminate X number of part-time hours.
Yep.
Whether I have six people doing those eight hours is, you know, your, your decision. But, you know, the hours and the salary paid out are kind of offsets it to a certain degree. It won't offset it a hundred percent.
Yep.
Yeah. But if we could get an estimate on the dollar amount and then put together that pro forma and bring it back to us.
Well, I, I think one thing, you know, the more activities we have out there, you know, one thing Dustin really wants to make sure is that somebody is out there when somebody's in the building. And that was something we hadn't done before. When you had membership hours and public hours, people had their card and they'd go in and there wasn't anybody there. And, and he just says, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with that situation and I don't blame him, um, and stuff. And so I think the more that building means more part timers and more full timers having to cover more hours, uh, and potentially public hours too. And so, um, I, I, it's going to be difficult to try to turn around and say, we're going to save, you know, I completely understand what you're saying is that the full-time should or knock down the number of part-time hours being used and it, and it will. I would be very surprised if it doesn't. The only thing is, is if you have more birthday parties out there, you have more things like that, you know, you might need a couple more part timers at different times and stuff. So. Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Spears.
And I support the idea. I don't, I don't have a problem with that and I've said it before. Where I've got a concern and I, I, I want us to be looking at how fast we're moving forward with that because one of the things we're going to talk about today is that annual report that Stacy did. And I had hoped in that annual report, we'd have a comparison of our F T Es from prior years. Um, but we just had last year's in there, so I couldn't really tell. I want us to be thinking about overall county growth on our F T Es. And we are looking at potentially some substantial increases at the jail from what the sheriff says, okay? We're looking at some needs that we've got on facility management and we're looking now at the B C O A C. I mean, we've got all these different things going on that are going to result in growth of county government. And I want us to be sure that we've looked at an overall picture and, and, and I support that, I just don't want to do it today. I'd like us to have maybe that five-year look back again. I can't remember Stacy, how many years you went back? Did you go five or 10 last time?
I want to think it was 10.
10 would be great.
And we don't, we don't have it on the agenda to approve or disprove today, but, uh, I just wanted to talk about it, so.
And, and I, and I support that. I think that'd be great for the facility. I just want us to be looking at the county as a whole and what we're doing on our growth because we're talking about substantial increase in county government in the next 12 months. And, and let's make sure we're not putting too many people in too many different places. That doesn't necessarily impact this position because I think we need that, but I think we have to look at our whole package.
I don't, I don't disagree with that. I think that's a smart idea. The other thing that I think is important is in working towards that full-time person. I mean, we've, we've talked about this for the better part of a year since last year's budget cycle, since Dustin was hired. Honestly, we talked about whether that was one or two people. Um, but I think the quick snapshot of, you know, 68,000 in unused budget last year and the new person being a $65,000 expenditure is not a deep enough dive for us to actually evaluate that, number one. I think we need time and reporting to be able to really read through that and see what the consequences of that decision are. And I want to see what that job description looks like so that the division of duties is really clear and we understand how that role and your role are different and where they overlap. Um, so I think party, part of the kind of charge forward is to figure out, let's draft a job description for what this person may be doing and then put together the reporting so that we've got it in a packet to actually evaluate that.
That's what I was kind of coming to you guys today to see what you wanted from me. Um, so job description and then what else?
I think we're talking hours, like Commissioner Pierce said, of how you project the de, maybe decrease of some part-time, uh, to offset the costs of the 60. I mean, that is another thing too, is, uh, on paper, you would think that you would have, you know, a full-timer would then take, take away some of the part-time hours. And, uh, and I would guess that would happen, uh, but you just don't know what those numbers are right now.
So that was my argument. My goal was to have somebody hired by the summer. Um, just because then it's slower to where we can train them. And then obviously January to April is our busy season. Um, and then I would try to stick within the budget that I was given to make up for those hours this year. But then when we do the budget this summer to put that in there. So, like, I know nothing's up for approval today or anything, but what are we looking at? Do I got to go another five years or another year or as far as, because I know you guys want to go back because obviously the numbers got to show it. We can't just, I mean, trial and error, you don't want to do that like you were talking about. But we've owned the facility for three years, right? The county purchased it in 2017. How far do you guys want to go before we make that decision? Do you want to have, do you want to own the building for five years and look at the five-year financial plan or?
No.
Okay.
Well, I don't think so.
I mean, I'm open to discussing that here soon. I, I really do think that it makes sense to look at the last three-year snapshot of where we're at and what growth looks like, even projected growth over the next two years. What do we need to do as a facility in order to kind of create the revenue that supports that second person? Um, what does that projection look like and what does that represent in terms of work for the two of you to kind of go and recruit those, um, additional memberships or additional events, those types of things?
Sounds good. Perfect.
I, I think it'll create some efficiencies also. Uh, you know, we're looking at the budget, the way it came in last year and there was quite a bit of savings in work that was done by the employees that we were paying for. Um, and I think that those types of efficiencies, those types of things with another full-time person can also be enhanced even more to try to get those expenses down, revenues up to where, uh, the difference in hours of part timers, the savings in maintenance and different stuff like that could hopefully offset that within a year, we're at the same type of budget that we were last year, but we added a full-time person. And so I, I think that would be a good goal to try to have, would be to see if add the ti, the, the full-time person, but be able to increase revenue, decrease expenses through efficiencies and then save some money off of, uh, part-time to be able to net it out. Um, that'd be a good goal, whether that's going to happen right away the first year, I don't know, but hopefully in the next couple of years, you could, we could be that direction.
Mr. Barley.
All right. The thing I guess I'd like is that we start to move forward with, with Tony Dustin and Stacy in particular, I suppose that we need to get the job description done. We need to get those figures to us as quickly as possible that we, we can make this deci, I mean, what's our hiring process? We make this decision Stacy and we've got to, we've got to look through an entire hiring process to, uh, put somebody on staff. I mean, are we talking a month, month and a half to do that?
And then depending on who you choose, I mean, yeah, waiting time there too.
Plus training, obviously.
I think it's going to be the commission's comfort level if you want to review the information from Dustin and at the same time approve the request to fill vacancy. If you're comfortable with the information presented, but if not, then he's going to present this information to justify the position. And two weeks later, you would see the request to fill vacancy. And then we post the job for two weeks. Um, and then the hiring process takes, you know, a, a, at least a couple of weeks to get to review applications, schedule interviews, conduct interviews. And then that person has to give, um, more than likely would ha, you know, would give it, have to give at least a two weeks notice if they're currently employed. So you're looking at, at least two, you know, probably closer to two and a half months before we would have anybody on.
And I would really like this. If Dustin can get the information in time for the next meeting, so.
I would really like to have an opportunity to look at the job description and Dustin's job description side by side before we do all the other stuff. I don't, I'd like not to do it all at the same time. I, I want some time to think about it and to see that we've got everything, because this is a big deal. When we add a new position, we have it forever. You know, let, let's make sure that we've got everything working the way we want. And we might have to have some conversations about the facility out there. Other, other than that, I, I just think that let's do it two steps instead of one, so we're not feeling pushed. So that if you come in and we say, no, we're not ready to make a decision, you don't feel like we just rejected the, the process. Let's figure out what we're doing first.
And it's tough too, because I've gone back and read my job description and it's, we're learning how to run this building. I mean, it's, it's new to, I mean, it's, it's a unique place with owning a gun range and being a county facility in my eyes, but. So what I'm gathering is job description, hours, next meeting, we'll look at it.
I think it might be a good opportunity to review your own job description because it probably doesn't fit what you're actually in charge of out there and what you're actually doing anymore. It was, you, you got stuck with the one we had.
Yeah.
And I think that's probably evolved. So I would encourage you to look at your own job description with the help of, of Stacy and Kristen to rewrite both of them so that they mesh rather than overlap, that they mesh. And that way gives us a better idea of where we're, where we're going with this leadership out there. But I'd like to see this come back as quickly as it's possible for you guys to put that together for this review that she's talking about, that Commissioner Pierce wants. I don't have a problem with that, but I think we need, because it is a long process, I'd like to get started with it as soon as we possibly can. And on the other point that you had on the F T E study, not has anything to do with you, but I'm going to hit it right now, uh, with the sheriff's department and other staff in the, in the county, it may behoove us to have a separate, I don't, I hate to call it a work-study session, retreat or something where we sit down and we start to look at each department and their needs for the next three, four, or five years as a sep, separate meeting. And then each of the department heads come in and, and, and we give them a month to get all their stuff together and we just sit down and we hash it out. It's hard to do that at this type of a meeting because it could take us all day to do it in all, all respects. So I'd encourage us to, to look at that and find a time to schedule that type of a meeting and give the, uh, all the department heads, including Dustin, the opportunity to, to come to us with their projected F T E needs and part-time needs in the future. Rather than trying to just hit it haphazardly, you're looking at all the overall headed class. Rather than trying to just hit it haphazardly, you're looking at all the overall headed class for a five-year projection. We haven't done that and I think it's a good, good exercise that we should do. Enough of that. Sorry Dustin.
No, it's fine.
Then I had a different question for Dustin. Have, have you had an opportunity to tour the archery facility in Yankton?
No, that's my whole, like every time I leave, it seems like I have to, you know what I mean? Like, and we just talked about staff coverage with other departments. I'm the only full-time person out there. So I feel in, like I said, I don't expect the part-timers to make some of the decisions with some of the, the things that are coming up out there. But I would love to go down to Yankton. There's one in Lincoln. I need to tour and see how everybody else operates. I've met with David Parker, who's the director of outdoor campus. And we were going to work together, uh, but COVID kind of shut that down. But yes, I need to go tour some of these other facilities.
And Yankton, I believe is a nationally recognized archery facility. So with the sheriff and, and Bob going down there tomorrow, did you say tomorrow? What is, when you guys going, maybe there's something you can, they can bring back that would help. But I just would encourage you when your schedule permits for you to go see that facility. It's well worth doing.
Well, and one of the comments that came up in our meeting is, uh, you know, Yankton's a world-class facility. It's huge and it's great, but they also have seven full-time employees. Um, and so when you want to handle stuff like that in that type of facility, if we want to take this to one, this just kind of hits back to Dustin's point that if we want to do some of that stuff, we probably need more than one full-time employee to be able to, if we want to move this facility to the next level of hosting types of things like that. So uh, you know, I think to the point of even bringing that up saying, I think, you know, he did some research on, on number of full-time employees on similar facilities. And we're kind of the only one that only has one, so.
And I'd just like to say, we remember we're in the COVID era and our numbers are what they are during the COVID. You know, we're using half-capacity out there. And it'll just, I think uh, our attendance is going to go up and so are our numbers, so. But good job.
Perfect. Thanks. Any other questions at all?
Stacy, on that, on that FTE um, study session, can we do that prior to budgeting, please? Yeah, I will look at some dates and send some dates out for a full day. You know, we've been talking about the strategic plan and doing kind of a work-study with that too. Maybe we can kind of combine those into a day-long session. Um, but yeah, it would be good to get that done before budgets in June.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, real quickly, uh, we do have the COVID cares act. Not really had a lot of people come in to see us. We understand that a lot of their rules have changed and they've tightened up a lot more of their requirements. I believe the initial amount was about 10 million. Uh, close to seven and a half was spent. The remaining three and a half is what's left for the state for the entire year. And so the feds have taken over reviewing the requirements and I've understood it's tightened up quite a bit. So we're kind of waiting to see what happens with that. You've probably seen from our report that we've been getting a lot more requests for rents. Uh, we're still sitting in pretty well with those. Utilities is still using a lot of the low-income energy assistance monies. So we have been hit real hard with that. Um, other than that, the only thing that's really went up, uh, normally I budget seven funerals for the entire year. As of uh, this morning, we've had six requests for funerals. So um, I, that seems kind of the tough spot right there. Uh, on the VA side of it, uh, the VA has been doing COVID shots. So far our van has been going to Sioux Falls for COVID shots, uh, usually three to four days a week. So we've been fairly busy with that. Otherwise, everything seems to be going okay and uh, that's all I have.
Any questions?
Mike, on the um, on the, the rental assistance.
Yes.
How much additional rental request do you think that we're getting in?
Right now, I, the last time I kind of looked at it, we're probably fairly close to where we would normally be. It's just that with the COVID money that helped out the last, last year. Um, we're hoping to use more of it in the spring. But again, uh, before you just had to show that there was an association with losing some of your income uh, during that six-month period, now they want it to be more zeroed in on it. Um, I think part of it also is that, you know, there was a moratorium on evictions. And uh, right now it's not a hundred percent sure where that's sitting at. But a lot more of the landlords are feeling as if they should be pushing more for uh, getting their money.
So I have, when possible, been speaking to our legislators about the importance. This was a program that the governor did last year that really did work. It, it did wonderful thing for in, low-income people. It helped landlords. I, it, it was just a great program. And um, there's all that one ton of money that everybody wants a chunk of. But our legislators did not know that the county paid rent in utilities for people. Okay? That was, they didn't know that. And, and I would say, you know, if, if the program's there and that's providing that type of assistance, then we don't have to come up with the money for it. I'm wondering if your state association's reaching out to, to anybody saying, you know, this is something that's costing counties money. And maybe there could be something more put into that program than the $3 million we had left over from last year. Because the $7 million went pretty fast. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that was, of course, that was, that was the federal monies.
Yep. But, but they have, they have some ability there. I just, I just want to encourage you maybe to think about reaching out. But what you would need to have, and I, if we have numbers, I'm happy to talk to people, maybe other people on the commissioner. If we had actual numbers on how that impacts what our obligations are to pay people's rent, that one-time rent payment and that one-time utility payment. Um, it'd be nice maybe to have some numbers to help encourage that fund to be a little larger than the $3 million statewide. I don't know what the rest of you think about that.
I, I do know we do have that um, welfare meeting coming up on the 16th and 17th. Um, and I believe we're going to be doing a Zoom on that, but that'll be something I'll address with the other group. Uh, right now I know that the last COVID monies, we actually were going through um, ICAP. They're trying to figure out for sure how they're going to, to staff that yet. And uh, the other thing is that ICAP was kind of the final statement, uh, say on how the money was being spent. This time they are pushing the, the fed, the federal government's coming in to take that part over. And uh, you know, so yes, we do want to spend, we do want to use that money and avoid having to use county money. And uh, but so far I have not heard a whole lot and a lot of the people are not, should say, a number of the people have been going around me just straightly to ICAP too, so.
And I, I don't think it would hurt as each of us individually, if you support that, mention it. I haven't talked to everybody, but I've talked to some of our people. And there would just wasn't, people didn't understand that the county does have an obligation under the County Poor Relief Act to make some of those payments and help people with that. So that's a, that's a big thing for our budget.
Any other questions? Excellent. Marty?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll try to be quick. Anyway, uh, in the last, I don't know, week or so, we've been up in the, in the thirties. Weekends have been busy uh, with uh, arrests, with the other agencies coming in and out. Uh, you know, a lot of them we can book in and book out. And uh, but it uh, uh, everything's working as smooth as it can, you know, with, with the construction and so forth. You know, um, we're running a lot of stuff through the lobby and uh, that, that can't be helped. But again, the outcome is going to be better in a few months. So appreciate um, that, that we're moving forward. Uh, the snow event didn't cause us a lot of problems. We had some slide-ins, those types of things. But nothing, nothing, uh, you know, real serious. It always helps, I always think, to have the snow event on the weekends because for some reason it's a little slower. Not everybody's trying to get to school and, and uh, work and so forth. I want to thank um, Highway Department, Brian and that, they come and took snow piles out of one of our lots and over at the 21, so that helps, uh, that helps. So thanks, Brian. And uh, Commissioner Pierce and myself are going to meet with the judge on Friday. Um, the state has come up and I, maybe you're going to talk about it, it's your thing. But the, the state has a secure, a security personnel that's looking at a survey of all the courthouses with security and so forth. And I just want to say, I think we're ahead of the, ahead of the curve, um, and so forth with a lot of courthouses and stuff. You know, even courthouses that, with the same population are close to us. So I think we're, we're in a, in a, in a good spot. But uh, we'll, we'll uh, visit with the judge and so forth with, uh, on Friday. Um, Sheriff's Conference coming up in April. I have a Sheriff's Conference call every, every uh, Friday and we talk about legislative stuff. It's an interesting political year. For, and it's just, I don't know, it's, politics is different this year in, in peer. And just what's going, going locally, I'm just thankful that I'm not going to run for a couple of years. See what it is in two years. I hope things slowed down in two years. So anyway, but it's, it's, it's interesting. Um, you know, we still kind of get beat up on, uh, you know, we're trying to get it, money to go back to jails, you know, to help. But it seems like we can't get anybody to, to, uh, the legislator to help us out a little bit, to help us with expenses and jails and things like that. So we, we still struggle there. Um, I guess that's about it unless you guys have, um, you know, you're talking about full-time employees and stuff. Um, you know, we're, we're working on, you know, minimum staffing and, and things like that. What we need for minimum staffing, what we, and so forth. I sent Bart to Roberts County that has a similar layout as our jail. They have a 72 population and uh, you know, see how they do things and so forth. So I'm hoping by around that April 1st that uh, we'll have kind of, give you guys kind of a, an idea, projection on how many full-time employees, you know, I'm still going to have to rely on part-time people to fill in the gaps with full-time, you know? I was always hoping I could eliminate a lot of the part-time because I know what, how Dustin struggles with part-time. You know, when you hire them, they can work anytime until they're, until you get them. And then they need this day off, this day off and so forth. But I'm still going to have to have part-time to kind of supplement the full-time people, so. And I need to have that information for you guys because we're, you know, we're looking at opening in October. So we're going to have to have some staff. It's going to take a while to get staff and training too. So we got a lot of, got a lot of hurdles to go, you know, before we open up. And so that's, but I just, I'm thankful that the commission is willing to work with us. You know, I talked to other sheriffs that have commissions that, you know, everybody's kind of needing a jail. You know, they're talking about a regional jail in the Aberdeen area for all those counties up north that don't have jails or had their jails closed and so forth. And you know, Madison's been voted down and Watertown's been voted down and we were able to, to move on. So we're really lucky. I, I really appreciate of, of where we're at right now, so. Anyway, any questions for me? Hope to give you some more drone as things keep going and get you another update on drone stuff.
Just a comment, Marty, uh, I want to day for all the work and yourself with the construction company with Henry Carlson. I've, I've watched that interreaction. I think you've seen it also. Uh, that they work together on just about every issue that comes along and, and they can laugh about it and they can fix it and they can move on. And that cooperative effort there, I appreciate it, seeing it between Henry Carlson Company and their subcontractors and your department. And I just want to publicly say thank you to those guys. They've, they've gone through a lot of issues with this construction project and they've handled it all really well.
Yeah. And I got to get, you know, I'm not going to take any of that credit. I'm going to give it to my staff. Because Bart and uh, of course Bart's doing what I tell him to do. Bart meets with them every morning and talks about stuff. And uh, and, and Dave uh, Beitler, you know, his background is just great with this type of stuff. And he knows a lot of things. He's saved us some money on, because we were having some problems with heat where we put our new uh, breath in the, it was freezing up on us. And when they come in to blow, we wasn't getting any because, and also he redid the duck work. So we had to heat it up and stuff, but he saved us money not have to call someone to do those things. So with his background, that really helps. But Bart is really good about going out and visiting every day with Jim, the foreman, and talk about stuff, so. And my staff has really been good. I mean, they've had, you know, an upset now for, for set September. And they've really stepped up to the plate. And, and so there's kudos to my staff for, and we have not had any incidences in the jail, you know, with security and those types of things. So that's still a priority for us. Thanks. And I'll relay that to them.
It's very important that they're working with them like that because they're the end users. I mean, it might not be you sheriff or one of us commissioners at the meeting, but those guys, they're the end users that need to know what's.
Absolutely. They're the ones that are going to be in there day in and day out back there. So they need to, you know, and, and sometimes I'm the last to know something, you know? When something really goes bad, then I'm the last to know. And uh, but usually Bart and David are on it right away and they, they fill me up and say, don't get excited sheriff. We, we got it handled. So anyway, so thank you.
Okay, that uh, concludes the department head reports. Uh, moving on to regular business. Um, first reading ordinance number 21 dash 01 and ordinance amending ordinance number 91 dash 03. In ordinance establishing a county housing and redevelopment commission for the administration of HUD Section 8, existing certificates, vouchers, moderate rehabilitation and other related housing programs.
This is simply just the first reading. Um, we will notice the second reading and have that public hearing at 9:00 AM, the April 6th meeting.
And uh, I'm not sure it's, we need to read the ordinance? Dan, you? Okay. Ordinance number 21 dash 01 and ordinance amending ordinance number 91 dash 3. In ordinance establishing a county housing and redevelopment commission for the administration of HUD Section 8, existing certificate vouchers, moderate rehabilitation, other related housing programs. Be it ordained by the county commission of County of Brookings, South Dakota as follows to wit. Article 1, Brookings County Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Section 1, created. There is hereby created and established in and for the County of Brookings, of County Housing and Redevelopment Commission to administer, contract, control and supervise HUD Section 8, existing certificates, vouchers, moderate rehabilitation, and other related housing programs through the use of municipal, county and federal funds. And to exercise any and all powers conferred by South Dakota Codified Law, Chapters 11 through 7 and 11 through 7A. Section 2, composition and appointment. The Housing and Redevelopment Commission shall be composed of five commissioners. The members shall be made of, of at least one resident of the city of Brookings, at least one resident that resides outside the city of Brookings and one county commissioner. The members shall be appointed by the chairperson of the Board of County Commissioners with approval of the county commission. Section 3, terms. The members shall be appointed for five-year terms beginning January 1st of each year. Each vacancy in an unexpired term shall be filled in the same manner in which the original appointments were made. Section 4, ex-official members. The Brookings County Human Services Director shall be assigned as an ex-official member of the Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Section 5, meetings. The Housing and Redevelopment Commission shall hold meetings as necessary to complete such business as from time to time may come before it. Official meetings shall be in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1 dash 25 dash 1. Special meetings may be called at any time by the chairperson by giving at least 24 hours advance, advance notice in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1 dash 25 dash 1, dash 1. Section 6, quorum of commission officers and rules. The powers of the Housing and Redevelopment Commission shall be vested in the commissioners thereof in office at any time, a majority of whom shall constitute a quorum for all purposes. Each commission shall select a chairperson, a secretary and a treasurer from among its commissioners who shall hold their offices respectfully for one year and, and until the successors have been appointed. The commission shall adopt such bylaws and other rules for the conduct of its affairs as it deems appropriate. Section 7, expenses of commissioners. No commissioner shall receive compensation for their services, but each commissioner shall be entitled to receive necessary expenses, including travel. but each commissioner shall be entitled to receive necessary expenses, including travel expenses incurred in the performance of their duties based upon current state rates. Section 8, commission as body corporate and general powers. The Housing and Redevelopment Commission shall be a public body, corporate and politic, exercising public and essential governmental functions and shall have all the powers necessary or convenient to carry out the purposes set forth herein, together with the powers granted by South Dakota codified law, chapter 11 through 7 and 11 dash 7A. Inclusive, but the commission shall not have the power to levy or collect taxes or special assessments. The Housing and Redevelopment Commission shall have the power and authority to super tend, manage, administer and control federal housing program within its jurisdiction, including the power to contract with individuals, public or private firms to administer said housing program on behalf of the commission. Section 9, collection of funds. All funds and revenues derived from the operation of the Housing and Redevelopment Commission may be collected by the Brookings County Finance or such other officer as shall be appointed by such commission. Section 10, reporting. In accordance with South Dakota codified law 11 dash 7 dash 106, the commission shall keep an accurate account of all its activities and of all its receipts and expenditures and shall annually in the month of January, make a report thereof to auditor general and to the Brookings County Board of Commissioners. Article 2, this ordinance is intended to amend ordinance number 91 dash 3. To the extent such ordinance is inconsistent with this ordinance, it is hereby repealed. All other ordinances in conflict where here is, are hereby repealed. This ordinance is based upon resolution number 91 dash 10, adopted by the Brookings County Board of County Commissioners on March 19th, 1991 and resolution number 91 dash 11, adopted by the Brookings County Board of County Commissioners on April 2nd, 1991. The housing needs addressed in those resolutions continue today and those resolutions remain in effect. This is the first reading, March 2nd, 2021. The second reading will be Tuesday, April 6th, 2021. We don't need. Item B, moving on our agenda. Action approved resolution number 21 dash 08. A resolution authorizing the purchase of corrugated metal pipe, bridge materials and greater blades based upon the price established through county of Beadle, South Dakota bid process.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion and second in discussion? Hearing none, call to roll.
Crookman?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, action approved agreement number 21 dash 13 and application for occupancy of the right-of-way county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy in Madera Township. Have a motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
From last meeting, we had several of these south of town. This is one that we had missed.
No other discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item D, action approved agreement number 21 dash 14 and application for occupancy of the right-of-way of county highways made by Justin Vinn, landowner, CNK Construction Contractor in Elkton Township. Have a motion approved.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any discussion?
I'd spoken with the township supervisors prior to signing this and, uh, in Elkton Township and they were in favor of this also.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item E, action approved agreement number 21 dash 15 and application for occupancy of the right-of-way county highways made by South Dakota Game Fish and Parks in Sterling Township. Have a motion approved.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and second.
This portion of land that they're applying for this culvert for is, is essentially bordered by water. And they need this access to, uh, access their additional properties on the other side of the creek. It's, it's a game production area.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item F, presentation of 2020 year-end report.
The 2020 year, year-end report, I started doing this last year. So I just was able to finish it up to get it in the packet here now for this, for 2020. Commissioners last year and it spells out who held what positions, chair and vice chair. And our department heads last year noting the change from Vicki to Lori in November. And I think that was the addition of Dustin in April of last year. Otherwise I think that stayed pretty much the same. The number of employees by department, I didn't, did not make any changes to this from, from 19. So things stayed consistent last year with the number of FTEs that we had. But I do have a fairly extensive spreadsheet that shows, I want to say it's a, a 10-year look back on that. So I will, I will get that submitted for the packet for the next time. So you can all see that. Here is our general fund expenses by, basically by department. Just showing you what those expenses ended up at, at year end. This, we get into the non-mandated in a little bit, but you can see we're spending the most amount of money, which makes sense on the sheriff and the county jail. You can kind of see where all of the other departments kind of land in there. Uh, this report shows the beginning budget, any contingency or budget supplements. That includes those automatic supplements that we get throughout the year. If we did any supplemental budget resolutions, those are all under the budget supplements. And then the contingency transfers are done by resolution at, typically at year end, kind of showing where we are. At the end, you can see that the unspent rolled to fund balance in the general fund was about just over 3.6 million. So now our other county funds, highway, road and bridge, um, these are all of our individual funds. You can see where the money was spent, obviously highway, um, but being the biggest with some of those, especially with some of those bridge projects getting paid out last year. Detention center expansion, you know, that was, you know, we, we did able, were able to pay about 1.7 million towards that project as that got underway last year. Everyone else seems a little bit low in comparison to those big, big numbers. So it kind of looks a little skewed, but that's where we landed on those other funds. And then again, um, similar to what you saw on that other spreadsheet, beginning balance, any supplements, any trans, contingency transfers, with the total budget ending and then the unspent that rolled into fund balance. You can see either a positive or a negative there. And that is, you know, budget that's left unspent, um, you know, minus the revenue or, or the revenue minus those expenses. So. Non-mandated funding expenditures. Now these all come out of our general fund. So you can see what we've, where we spend our dollars on the non-mandated entities on this sheet. Please stop me if you have any questions. Just yell. Uh, revenue, general fund and our road and bridge fund, two of our two biggest funds. That's why I do the, the revenue for these. And you, basically this kind of shows where we get our revenue. So for our general fund extensively, we get it from taxes. And then on the road and bridge, uh, transfers, some surplus in there, intergovernmental expenses. Are, make up our revenue there for road and bridge. And intergovernmental, I think some of that deals with when we get a percentage of like our big projects paid for, you know, by the state that we get that, we pay upfront and then we get that revenue back. So. Other county funds, you can see kind of by color, uh, all of those other county funds. And then where we get our, our revenue in each of those funds. So detention center is this red, the bond proceeds came in last year. So that is showing that. Some other ones, you know, uh, taxes is, I believe that's the 301 building, county building fund. And then detention center, we received some tax dollars there as well. Just kind of shows, you know, where, where each of those gets, gets their revenue from. The revenue recap, so we were, um, we're over budget, which is actually a good thing with revenue. We, we received more revenue than we had budgeted for. The last budget, the road and bridge was down a little bit. We received only 80% of budgeted revenue. We also budgeted, um, as part of that revenue, we budgeted about, I want to say it was about a million dollars for a local federal bridge grant because we anticipated getting one and we, and that dollar amount was different. So that kind of, that kind of explains that loss. We were anticipating that, that, um, that grant and it didn't come in. So that, that kind of makes up that shortfall. That's why that's showing only at 87%. Emergency management, um, we did supplement or transfer quite of, uh, quite a lot of dollars over to that fund to get that fund back in the black. So that's, that's where that's showing up as more than budgeted. Typically that's not the case. It's kind of a one, one-year anomaly there. Uh, register of deeds received about 4,300 more than budgeted. And then, um, county building fund, 73% less. Part of that was the, um, the city paid for their portion of the resource center. If you recall, they're, they're paying us a hundred thousand dollars each year over five years for the resource center. And for some reason, two payments or two, two of those payments got, showed up in 2019. So we were short a hundred dollars of anticipated revenue in 2020. So that kind of makes up, almost makes up kind of that shortfall there. So these are just, the next few slide, or some of these are just comparisons where we have been over the last three years for revenue. Expenditures, fund balance, assets and liabilities shown in this, this slide specifically for the, um, general fund. And as you can see, um, things tend to have gone up a little bit here each year. Um, expenditures in 19 and 18 and 19 were very, very close. But expenditures went up, but so did revenue. Uh, our fund balance increased, our assets increased and liabilities actually went down a little bit in general fund. And then this is the same, the same snapshot of what is going on in the highway fund. And the county building fund, our 301 fund, our capital, kind of our capital projects fund. You can see that pretty much staying pretty consistent throughout the years. So, um, thank you, Brian, for helping me with this slide, update on our bridge projects. So right now, the construction in progress in 2021 is on that Bruce, on that Bruce Bridge, just north of Bruce. And Brian's been giving updates on that at meetings. Construction in progress as well. We still have the two, um, river bridges south of town listed as construction in progress. Mostly because there's going to be some work yet to be completed yet this spring on the south side of those bridges on the county line there. Uh, last year we did receive that local federal bridge replacement grant. In 2019, uh, construction in progress, uh, still some pre-engineering grants. You know, Brian had said various stages of completion due to delay type size and location surveys by DOT. Completed, uh, in 2019 was the, uh, bridge a mile west of Bruce going over the river. And then we had, um, three, uh, three structures with grants totaling 355, 400. Those are preservation grants that were completed in 2019. And then in 2018, as we're calling it the Sinai Bridge, right? Currently in the design phase. I think we're getting closer and closer now to getting that one bid. Um, it was going through, um, some stuff at DOT was kind of the holdup there. But now landowner and utility certificates have been approved and now we're just waiting, awaiting that bridge date or a bid date rather. And then some, some pictures, our detention center expansion project is underway. We broke ground back in October and there's a picture of all of us scooping some dirt. Right now, the total estimated cost is about 18 million. That includes some soft costs as well. As you heard Chad say that, and Marty say in his report that, that phase one, the new addition is expected to be complete this fall. Um, I think we're kind of talking more around that October, um, give or take right now. And then the total project, the second phase of course, is the remodel of the current space. Total completion is June of 2022. And then I just included some, um, kind of progress photos in there. You can see where we started from with our outdoor wreck yard and the Sally Port in that parking lot. Here's where we first got to tear into that outdoor wreck yard and what it looked like as we cleared off that space. And then construction got underway. This actually, this lower right-hand corner picture is on the east side of the sheriff's office with that new 24/7 area getting, um, getting done. Just some other pictures. You can kind of see the progress as we go. And then the precast walls getting, getting put up now. And as Chad had mentioned, that's well underway and hopefully by the end of, uh, about April, they're talking about the cells going in. So another couple of months and you'll see a lot of progress there, but there's been a lot already. Madera Monument, that, uh, that project, that restoration project was completed last year. Um, I haven't heard anything just yet, but, uh, rededication ceremony for the 100-year anniversary of the Daughters of the American Revolution, Madera Chapter, I believe is going to be taking place sometime this spring out and out at this site. So as I hear more about that, I'll be sure to share that with the commission. That looked, it looks really, really nice how it turned out. And then I would probably be a little bit remiss if I didn't mention COVID in 2020. As you are well aware that that impacted, um, everyone, uh, to a certain extent, um, last year. You know, we did close for a couple of months, the, the doors were closed, but county staff continued to come and work through that process. And I, um, just want to send a thank you out to all of the county employees that continue, continue now even and continued that process to, to work, um, do as best they can when the doors were actually closed. The jail changed a lot of things. You know, we put up Plexiglas, hand sanitizer was purchased, was used. We've, you know, continued to use some different disinfecting texts and techniques everywhere. Uh, Zoom, uh, was, if you don't know how to use Zoom or Teams now, by now, um, you're probably haven't had to attend a whole lot of meetings because that's how they all were done. And I get, you know, I think interesting thing that came out of that is, you know, people can realize they can utilize those even, I think moving forward in a non-COVID environment, um, we'll be able to utilize some of those resources as well now. But I think, um, again, thanking the county employees, we navigated that and continue to very well. So our services really did not waver. We had to do them a little bit differently via the phone, via the mail, via email, some things, but, um, you know, everyone really did step up and make that happen. So I believe that's the end of my year-end report. If you have any questions from me? No? All right. Good. Well, then I'll move right into my
My report, it's, it's very concise. I think it'd be a great one to put on our website somewhere.
Yeah.
Explanations aren't always there, but at least people can look at it. I think it's well done. Thank you. I think it's well done. Thank you.
And then from my staff report, there is information. We're getting now the first bill from the interchange project. So I want, I will be submitting that at the next, at the next meeting. What we're going to do, because our 2 million that we have designated for that project is in fund balance, we will need to do a supplemental budget resolution to pull that money out of fund balance and put it in this year's budget to pay for, to start paying some of those bills up to that $2 million. So, you know, there's been, I guess, one question I would like to ask is it is in general fund right now, that $2 million is. We have paid some expenses out of the highway fund, some surveying costs, things like that. Do you want that 2 million to stay in the general fund? And we create a budget line in the general fund to pay that $2 million out of? Instead of transferring that money over to the highway, the road and bridge fund?
Well, it is a road and bridge project, so I don't have a problem with it as long, as long as we know where it's coming from.
As long as we can track it.
Yeah.
I don't know, but you want to create a completely separate fund for it?
And if you're, if you're confident that the project is going to move forward, you know, I think it's clean to do that, to put it there. If, if you're not confident that the project is going to move forward, I wouldn't move the money out of the general fund just yet.
But I think it's going to go forward. But even if it doesn't, you know, we've got bridge projects that are coming up that we just got approved for that, that if we move that 2 million into road and bridge, we'd probably be able to use it on road and bridge stuff. You know, I don't think it's going to sit there for five years before we get it spent. Because, I mean, we need 50% match and a 40% match on those new ones we just got. And that could be used for that too. So I might, I'd be similar to Commissioner Bartley that this is a road and bridge project and that's probably where it should go.
Okay.
So I think. Are you saying that the $2 million would be transferred from the general fund to the 201 fund? And then assigned to the interchange in the 201 fund? Is that what you're saying?
That's fine, yeah.
I think what, yeah, I think what we would do is because some of these projects' costs are now starting to come. What we do is we would have to do a supplemental budget resolution for a couple of things. One transfers out would need to be supplemented with the $2 million because we're going to take that out of fund balance and then transfer that over. And then we would do a transfer, an additional transfer in from general fund to the highway fund. And then we would create, also do a supplement to increase, create a budget line, I think, specific to this project. Similar to how we have kind of a big grant line, create an expense line for the interchange project in the 201 fund, give it that budget. And then we, we would just need to track those costs. And then as they are incurred, spend that 2 million down. If that whole 2 million isn't spent by year end, which I don't think it will be, that would then roll into fund balance in the highway fund, which we could then assign in the road and bridge fund. It's kind of, that probably doesn't make a, I hope that's pretty clear as mud, but.
What would be the downside instead of what you just said? When we do our, after we roll it over into the 201, we do our supplement budget to give spending authority, to maybe limit the spending authority to the amount that we guess, because we don't have any numbers, that we would spend this year? So that we don't have to worry about that getting rolled over into the highway, into the 201 fund balance at the end of the year? Did that make sense, what I just said?
Yeah, so instead of giving it, giving $2 million of budget authority in that line, you want to.
Maybe 500,000.
Just transfer 500,000, just do a transfer of 500,000 initially?
I'm, I'm just pulling that number out there by the way. We think it's 82,000 that we need to pay now was, am I looking at that right? What's our share?
Yeah.
Okay.
The county share is 82,763,26.
I mean, it's not that big of a deal if we need more money to do another supplemental budget hearing down the road. But I'd hate to transfer the whole $200,000 into the 201 general fund right now.
Any other thoughts? Do you want to just supplement a portion of it now?
As long as it's identified, like you just, like you said, we moved it, all the 2 million in there. We spend out what we need for this year.
Right.
Then we identify the remaining balance as fund balance in that account.
Right.
We kind of know what we have there anyway, what's for. So doing multiples to try to guess how much we're going to pay and then all of a sudden we're short or anything. You know, we've got the 2 million, it's for the project, let's get it there. And then whatever we don't spend, getting the habit of putting it in identifying what needs to come out of there for the next year after that.
Right, right.
I think you misunderstood what I said. I think we should put the whole thing into the 201 fund, do a separate line item like she said, like we do for Sinai Bridge, for example. But then the amount that we take out of that now on our supplemental budget, I'd like not to take the whole 2 million and pop that into the 201 spending authority for this year.
All right, yeah, I misunderstood you, I guess.
Right, on the interchange.
So either way, it rolls back into that same fund balance and we have to reassign funds again for next year. I mean, regardless of whether you provide the spending authority for the full amount or not.
Right, but we're, we're unsure what, what we're going to be.
So either way, you should guess high.
In their future.
Guess high, but not 2 million.
So what's, I guess, what's the benefit that you're seeing doing it your way? Considering just throwing the 2 million in and the difference there? What are we going to do that's going to save?
Every time we get one of these little sheet things here, we can see what our balance is in that one. And we don't really see that in anything else. I don't, I don't know how much is left in the highway department budget for this, that and the next thing. If we dump it all into the 201 fund, we don't have a document that we can look at.
Yeah, you, you would, you would look at the expense report and see what, how that expense goes down. That report is given to you as part of the finance officer's report every month too. You get that expenditure report, so you would see that budget line. And then you would see that 2 million decrease as these bills come in. It, it wouldn't show up on fund balance, but keep in mind, fund balance really doesn't give a true picture either. I mean, that's just your, that's not an expenditures report, that's not a revenue report.
I, I get that.
So you're.
I like to see that we got that money set aside for that project. But if everybody else is saying, and I wish I was more comfortable with us knowing for sure how everything runs in our 201 fund, but I'm not real comfortable with how everything's running in our 201 fund. And it just seems to me to put an extra $2 million in there to keep track of, it's a little messy. But if that's what everybody wants to do, that's fine.
I don't think it would be if you give it a specific budget line. Like if you're going to put it in an existing budget line, I think that does get a little bit, it could get a little bit messy. But if we create its own budget line, interchange, its own expense line, that says interchange project, going to start with a 2 million, you're going to see it decrease by the 82, $82,000 that we're going to pay. And then as those bills come in, now then at year end, we can see what's left in there. And then we can, it'll, it'll roll into fund balance, but then we can assign that.
Then it'll show up on this, this sheet.
Or.
Right, and it'll show how much we have left, how much we've spent.
At the end of the year.
At the end of the year.
Yeah, or what you could do is in the beginning of 2022 then, whatever rolled into fund balance, you do another supplemental and you pull that money out and put it back in the budget. So say we, say we had $500,000 worth of bills in '21. There's a 1.5 million, so you know that that went into fund balance. And at the beginning of 2022, you do a supplemental budget to put that 1.5 million to give yourself the budget authority again to spend it, anticipating then that the project, you know, continues to move forward and you pay that down again. So you're, I think that's cleaner than trying to do, put that into fund balance and then having to do supplemental budgets every time you get a bill. And I could, you know, with the legis, with the audit, the, with legislative audit here, I can maybe discuss that and see what would be the cleanest way to do that as well, but.
As long as they're okay with creating another line.
I don't think that's going to, that's not an issue. That can be done with a. And, and, and we could pay this bill next week, honestly, without doing the supplemental budget yet. We can create that line, pay, pay it out of an expense line. And then eventually when, because we have to notice the supplemental budget, it takes, that takes a little extra time because of budgeting or noticing requirements. Then, once we get the budget in that line, it would go back into the black, but it would show up as a negative temporarily until we do the supplemental budget. Okay, all right. Let's see, so the, the spring workshop, I actually sent out, or I handed out this morning, an updated agenda for your, the spring workshop that's taking place in a couple of weeks. What I need to know is, are, is everyone I have, Mike, Ryan, Angie and Larry all going? Are you going to need the whole, your room for both nights?
I don't need a room at all.
Okay.
And I'm planning to drive up Wednesday morning early, so.
Okay.
Plan to take my own vehicle, but I can certainly, if anybody else wants to go early. And I will stay overnight Wednesday night, but.
But not at the hotel?
Not at the hotel.
Okay. Mike? Okay. Okay, Larry?
Same, not exactly sure yet.
Okay. All right, and then. We talked about spring workshop. The, one other thing, and Dan can kind of help me with this, is we did, I also handed out, there is a couple of stapled information sheets from the resilient community Brookings County. And we are going to put out the press release, and that's the one that's, that's for immediate release that says, that's mostly just words. But what this is, there was a number of meetings a while ago on, with this C, CPC M. Yeah, I'll have Dan explain it because I don't know enough about it.
That's fine. So the South Dakota Center for Prevention of Child Meltreatment, USD, with local counties, not county governments, but agencies within a county. So that's why Brookings County is referenced that way. But what they do is they advise and try to promote collaboration among the various agencies within a county that have direct, I guess, duties, responsibilities, interactions with child, children who may be exposed to maltreatment within the home. And so for us here in Brookings County, it's been my office, it's been CPS, it's been CASA, it's been Nikki Eining over at Avera Behavioral, it's been Chad Adamson, Darla Beal, Heidi Gulickson, and then this Michelle Vanderweird. So what we've done over the, well, actually since I've been here the last two years, is there's been quarterly meetings with all of these entities within Brookings County that have discussed collaborating to make sure that the children that are being exposed to maltreatment here in Brookings County, make, making sure that we recognize the problem. And then, once the problem is recognized, what are we doing to make sure we promote this resilient community? And so the Center for Prevention of Child Meltreatment has recognized the Brookings County team, for lack of a better term, of these entities as the best in South Dakota in terms of being a resilient community. And that's through the work of, I got to give a big shout out to Nikki Eining because she's worked very hard and Darla Beal, those two have worked very hard to make sure that there's been a lot of follow through on these quarterly meetings, but then also making sure that all these entities have buy-in. So they've been very successful in putting this together. And they've gotten the notice of this CPC M, who is now going to recognize the Brookings County team on April 14th at 10:30 here in city chambers as the South Dakota Resilient Communities Brookings County Award, which is the state, statewide award that's, is, is going to be given out to this team. So they asked the city, as well as Stacy here at the county, to help disseminate the, the recognition that the Brookings County team is going to receive on, on April 14th. So they've been exchanging emails back and forth with Stacy and I. And so we're just going to work with the city and trying to disseminate the, the program. I'm going to speak along with others at this April 14th meeting. I'll kind of be the county representative there, but everyone's welcome to attend. If you, yeah, if you want to, so.
Thank you, I'm glad you were here today.
That they're asking us to agree to.
Yeah, so if you go to the, the back page of that handout, the pledge is essentially from your business or organization. So in this case, I would be the county's representative and have been for the last two years. And then you're just saying that this person is going to attend mandatory reporting training. You're also going to host or send staff annually to a trauma informed training and then send success stories of how your business or organization is creating more resilient community. One of the things that they've recognized as it relates directly to the county's involvement is, part of the criteria is trying to get offenders to reinvest back into the community through like diversion type programs. And so they've recognized the state's attorney's office's diversion program as one of those of many criteria that we have here in Brookings County. And so that's been one of the success stories that we've been able to, to put into their, their annual report. But then, you know, creating a more resilient community for youth and families in Brookings County. You know, obviously the Boys and Girls Club would be one of the big ones there, as well as the Brookings County Youth Mentoring Program. So as a pledge, you're, you're saying that you're going to do those four things. And this is open for businesses and other governmental organizations to, to pledge to do as a resiliency motivator, so.
So Dan, how do, how do you see that impacting us on the annual mandatory reporting training? Because I could see that, how that's worded, that would apply to your office. It would apply to the sheriff's department, it would apply to the BCOAC, it would apply to our health nurses. How do you, how do you see that happening and what's that going to cost? And what kind of commitments that could be?
Well, I don't think that they're saying that everyone in the county needs to attend that.
Says anybody that has contact with youth and families, those are the ones I just named.
Well, I think the, the motivator, so the designate, the key representative, host or send staff, annually trauma informed training that works best for your business or organization. As a Brookings County resilient motivator, you will receive information. So I'm, I'm reading three as.
I'm looking at two.
Okay.
That's the mandatory reporting requirements for child abuse under the statute. And that would require annual mandatory reporter, reporter training to quite a number of our people. That's, that's what I'm asking, how would you see that happening?
Well, a lot of that has been available here in Brookings at these quarterly meetings. And so part of that training to staff is not some agency that we're sending people off to outside of Brookings County. I mean, Nikki Eining would be more than happy to come over to the county and put on a training like that. So we have a lot of those individuals that are capable, putting that training on, several, just here in Brookings County. But Nikki is the first that pops into my head. So it's not going to be a cost to the county, so to facilitate that.
Okay, but.
If that's your concern.
I, it's just, this would be a, a new requirement that we would be agreeing to, that we don't do now, that all the sheriff's office people have to come to, that all the BCOAC people have to come to, all of the. all of the, um, what's the other department that I mentioned?
Well, I think the deputies, and I don't wanna speak for Marty, but, you know, they already receive a lot of that training anyway through their law enforcement in terms of reporting, uh, child maltreatment. I mean, that's part of their law enforcement duties, is, is to do that. And so, this isn't necessarily an additional training, this is people that maybe haven't received that training in the past, um, to make sure that we're doing that. And so, if it's BCOAC individuals, you know, that might be a, a good thing for them to attend, but, um, I don't see this as a, as a new requirement necessarily for like the sheriff's office, um, or especially other agencies that already receive that type of training.
So essentially, you're looking for our approval to be this person?
Well, I'm not even, I'm not even saying that the county has to s- to, to sign this. Um, I'm just saying that this is what they were asking for the county and the city to send out as part of the press release. Um, I'm already on the resilient community, they've already identified the state's attorney's office as,
Okay.
you know, as part of this team and have been for the last two years. I haven't signed this. Uh, they're not asking that the county sign it either. Um, they're just asking this to be disseminated through, through county channels, so.
Yes, the press release, they are asking that we, we send out the press release, through our county channels, to try to get the word out essentially.
You're saying, putting it on our Facebook page?
Facebook page, our website, things of that nature.
You know, and I don't have a problem with this program, I'm, I don't, I don't wanna sound like that. Plus, we already fund everybody. In this county, we're already giving them some of our non-mandated funds, except for the school system. Everybody else, we're already, um, supporting financially. But I, I would have a problem with us signing the pledge, because I don't know that we can comply with that mandatory ru- training requirement that's in there without, without doing some major activity for our staff.
Okay.
So, but you're saying they're not asking us to sign the pledge?
Now, are you guys, are you comfortable with using our county, um, our county channels in order to get the word out?
I don't have a problem with it.
Just the question is, would we do that for other entities?
For the kids.
Would, would we do that for other entities?
Depends on the request. What it was, yeah. Each one will be individually analyzed and considered.
Well, that, Commissioner Burley?
I don't, I don't have a problem with it. Um, I think it's fine, I think it's, again, it's a good honor. It's a great team effort that everybody's getting together to get this going. We're gonna be recognized as the first community in Brookings, or in South Dakota, to get recognized as, as this award, so, um, I, I don't have a problem with it, and I even don't really have a problem signing the, the pledge. Um, you know, if, if the training helps employees at the OAC identify somebody that might be having issues, I think that's something very worthwhile anyway. And to ask them to go do that for a half a day, or even have the training out there at the OAC for all, for county employees, uh, is, is, I don't think it's too much to ask for us there too, and so.
Well, and like I said, I mean, Nikki would be happy to do that at no cost to the county. I mean, that's what they do. Is, is that sort of thing.
Yeah.
So.
I, I don't, I guess, you know, I don't think it'll be as difficult to comply, um, you know, uh, to this, and um, and I support it, and I appreciate all the work that's been going on for the last couple of years. I think it's a nice honor, and, and we can get more out to the public and that kinda stuff, that we are doing that stuff, and we're collaborating, and we're trying to do the best for the kids, I don't see any way it can hurt us, so, that's my thoughts.
I would agree. And frankly, working with youth and families in general, um, I've been through mandatory reported training multiple times. It is, it's like, it's not a difficult thing to comply with. And for folks who work with children and families, I think it's an important part of what they should be trained to do anyway.
I, I don't have any problem with that. I've done mandatory reporter training myself in the past. The problem is, the way that that's written, it's mandatory. We have a hard time getting all of our staff to come to our health stuff. How do we do all those people that have contact with families and children? How do we make that mandatory, and then track that they're doing it? That's what I didn't want us to have to worry about, so.
I guess I'm not concerned with the tracking part of it, if it becomes an issue with somebody that we didn't have every individual involved. We would, uh, basically correct that situation at that time. But additional training?
Well, right, and if you're making a good faith effort as an organization to do that, there's, it's not like somebody's gonna come in and penalize the county. I mean, it, it's just a pledge. I mean, you're just saying, I'm gonna make a good faith effort to comply with making sure that my organization has training for, for reporting. So, uh, there's no sanctions for, for maybe falling short of that if you're making a good faith effort, so. But.
To me, it looks like a good program to be involved in, so, I support it.
So you're, uh, the consensus is to go ahead and post the press release and sign the pledge as well? And start looking at getting some of those trainings in place for our, for our staff that, that fits with, yes?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have, unless you had any additional questions for me.
Okay, thank you Stacy. Uh, state's attorney's office report?
Uh, nothing other than what I intend to do my annual report, uh, at the next commission meeting, so.
Okay, Commissioner Pierce?
Since I attended the Chamber of Public Affairs Legislative Update on at a, um, meeting with, um, Bart from the Detention Center, and I wish Marty was still in here. Um, and people from the Department of Corrections, and Annie Brokenleg from JDAI, and people from the Boys and Girls Club, to talk about our plans over at the jail for the juvenile area. Oh, I'm gonna wait till Mark, Marty, he's walking back in. And we talked specifically about the secure versus the unsecured sections of the remodel at the jail. And what came about from that is we determined that there needed to be some additional work done on our plans. And Bart is setting up something to, um, have more conversation with DOC, the Department of Corrections, regarding the secured area. And then, um, he really, I think, came away from that meeting, and I don't wanna be putting words in his mouth, Marty, so if you have something to add, that maybe we didn't have the unsecured part done right yet in our plans. That's what I, I think he came away from that meeting. And I think Bart is doing some additional work on that, and there might be a change requested in what's in the plans for our current existing part of the jail, for wh- where the unsecured section on the juvenile stuff will be. Did I say that where we're at? Okay, there are just some issues that need to be looked at, that maybe were finer details than what we've been ready for now. But because we're moving so fast in the jail, we need to get those tacked down and everything ready to go. Then on, um, February twentieth, I attended the, by Zoom, the District Four and Seven Forum, which was really well-done. And on, um, the twenty-fourth, attended, again, the Chamber of Public Affairs Legislative Update meeting, and that's happening just every Wednesday on that meeting. There is a bill in pure, and I didn't have time to, um, take a look at that this morning, that, um, on that township and county secondary road culvert bill. And I don't know if anybody else has heard where that's at. Are you following that at all, Brian?
Yeah, I've been following it, I believe it's, it's dead.
Is it? Okay. That would provide some additional monies for culvert maintenance on township roads and, and, um, county secondary roads. On March first, we had our final drainage committee meeting. And we'll be presenting that report on April sixth, is that our next meeting date? To, to the commission, and I have to say that Ben took the stuff that was done and really put a lot of work into it. It's a nicely done report. Doesn't come out the way I hoped it would. We don't have any great solutions, but we have some recommendations that we're gonna be presenting to, to the commission. But he did a lot of work on it, and I think it came out nice. Then, um, I think the sheriff talked about the fact that, on Friday, he and I are meeting with, um, Judge Stoltenberg to talk about, uh, security audit at the courthouse. And that's part of that, um, UJS initiative, they're hiring, if they haven't already hired, a security consultant for the courthouses throughout the state that will be employed full-time by the UJS, I believe. And they're going around to each of the courthouses now and doing this security audit and asking these various different questions. Stacy gave me information for the part to fill in for the commission part. And I imagine that Marty's working on his parts, that we'll have all that ready to put together when we, when we get there. And Judge Stoltenberg has said to me before that, when it comes to security issues, that he thinks we're kind of ahead of the, the game a little bit, but that doesn't mean that there aren't other things that we can be doing. And I think that I had reached out to, um, Angie and to Mike, I think. I hadn't spent much time at the courthouse recently, because I do all my stuff by phone, or Zoom, or whatever, my hearings and everything. And I looked at our parking lot that is on the south side of the courthouse, and asked each of them to take a look at it and see if, if you thought that there was going to need to be some work done there. And I don't know if either one of you had a chance, our parking lot is starting to deteriorate. And that might be something that we wanna have some conversation about. And I don't know if that's because we're having more traffic because of the building project, or maybe it's been a long time, I think, since anything was done. But that's something we're gonna have to look at and, and maybe keep in the back of our minds when we're looking at budget stuff up for the upcoming year, because there are holes, and I don't know if you have anything you wanna say about that, but.
It is in sorry shape.
And that's expensive. I think, I think there are some other things that need to be done at the courthouse. Stacy did all that work to get a, a water heater put in one of the bathrooms last week.
Actually, in a utility closet that serves the first floor restrooms in the new addition, the elevator additions, so yeah.
So, once we started looking, I mean, there's some stuff we need to be doing at the courthouse. So, we'll be coming back to you on all of that. And that would be my report.
Is that something we could patch? I mean, can you plans get going? Could you have somebody patch some of those holes as a short-term thing? And then look into grinding down in an overlay or something? I mean, it's asphalt, isn't it?
Outside my area of expertise, I have no idea.
Brian, would, would you have time to look at it and see if, what the issues are? I don't know if it's, uh, I believe it's concrete.
Is it concrete?
I think it's concrete. And it's spalling on the top in some areas, and some cracks and some chunks coming out, which is normal. Once the starches fall, as you know, concrete absorbs moisture and cracks when it freezes, so. Uh, there is maintenance issues that could be done there, or a complete replacement, it would be expensive, but could be looked at. I don't think as a part of the jail project, but it could be looked at as far as courthouse is concerned. Future budgets. I don't think it's unsafe. I didn't see anything that looked unsafe at this point when I looked at it.
We'd wanna wait till the project's completed before this, we looked at, so.
And if we think we need to do something, I, it just looks like a spendy thing to me. And if, if Brian can take a look and maybe give us his, his opinion on what's going on over there, we can build it into a budget for a couple of years from now or whatever, but, but it, it looks to me like we're gonna have to do something.
Alright, you ready? Okay. Well, I was gone last meeting, so I've got a couple of different things, but most of my uh, involved around the detention center and its building projects, have several meetings every other Thursday, it seems like. And also, uh, we had a long meeting up here with the detention, uh, equipment and the finer details in that. And, uh, we got through that, it took a little while, but we got through that. And then we also had a jail security one here on the twenty-fifth, uh, prior to the, going out to the POD and working at Softeau Center in the afternoon. I wanna bring up this really quick, because I think we need to, to move forward on it. We did get a request from BKV for an additional service member, uh, memo. We had asked them to, uh, to put a proposal together to modify our construction documents to, to include the replacements of cameras in the courthouse, updating that security system to tie into the jail system. And they've come back with a proposal, and it involves the additional drawings, security electronics, and architectural to gather the task at times they would propose the work involved. Architectural part of it is, the, uh, uh, security desk is come into the courthouse, is just a desk. And, uh, the suggestion was that we need to make a permanent one, that's obviously not going away. So, they're gonna design a just desk for a security person to, to man that with different monitors. It may take more than one monitor to do it properly, so those are the things they're gonna look at here. Uh, there's, uh, there's twenty existing cameras, and they've identified fourteen additional cameras that need to be installed. There's also approximately forty-five existing doors connected to that part, card reader system, proximity card reader system. Uh, so, and everything needs to be connected into the jail's camera system and, and to the monitoring in the, in the, in the jail facility, so. Uh, so the proposal comes in at, I can break it all down if you're interested in it. The security electronics lump sum is about fifty-four hundred dollars of it. The architectural part of it is about thirty-six hundred and, uh, thirty dollars. Total proposed fee is nine thousand thirty dollars with the, uh, soft class, obviously, with some printing and some other things added onto that. So, we're pressing that ten thousand dollar point to get this accomplished, but we need to, to move forward with those plans. Uh, is, Larry has to sign a, a statement authorizing that, so, uh, Stacy, have any comments on that?
No, other than, I would probably bring this forward for an action item at the next meeting.
Okay. Well, just so you know, it's there. We, we should put it on an action item as a change to the proposed contract with BKV. Alright, so to y'all know that it's coming, let's make sure we get it done.
So Mike, what you're saying is, for ten thousand dollars, we can have the whole camera system for the courthouse tie into the jail? And that'll, and that will be able to monitor the courthouse as well?
That's just the architectural fees.
Right. That's just the architectural.
That's not the work being done.
That's the professional services for architecture and engineering.
Right.
Identifying the kind of additional needs, it is none of the install.
No, the install will be handled by the security company itself. And, uh, the long meeting basically stated that they would be able to control access to cameras so that somebody in a particular office in the courthouse that has a iPad or an, uh, I, iPad of some sort has access to certain cameras, but not any cameras in the jail itself. But the jail would have access to almost all the cameras, uh, from a control center. So, they would, that's all software-driven, would have to be, uh, installed as we're doing the jail in order for it to work. So that's why we're looking at getting this accomplished now, getting those drawings done, so that we get everything done. And I'm, I'm assuming that it's gonna relate to your security upgrade, I don't know if you need to have this guy come in here and do our courthouse first.
But, as long as it gets coordinated, so that we're not, like, duplicating services or redoing something, I think that would be important.
The, what they were talking about with that security coordinator with the state is coming through and reviewing what we have for security and offering recommendations, not, the state's not gonna do any of that work.
Right, but if they have recommendations about it that are similar or dissimilar, or in conflict with what BKV is re- recommending, I think we should figure out what that is, so that it can get incorporated into the system, so that we're not immediately deficient.
I don't know where they're at in that process, but you'll know more at the end of this week, so.
I can finish my report.
Next, uh, February the BCOAC meeting, um, we got to see the year-end numbers, and, uh, and they came in quite well, uh, comparative. So, we're happy to see that, expenses were down quite a bit. Uh, we did, uh, personnel was down a little bit, um, because of, uh, some time there where it was just part-timers and we didn't have a full-time person there, but. and we didn't have a full-time person there. But revenue was up also. So we're seeing quite a bit of use, especially during COVID where we're shutting down half the lanes and that kind of thing. So. But, you know, losses, I guess, you know, you guys get a chance to see that, were quite a bit less than, than last year. Almost 60,000 less than last year. So I think we're getting closer to where we want to be. As, you know, we've never really said where exactly we want to be, but we know it's not going to break even. But we also don't want to be hemorrhaging money out there either. So Dustin's been, done a good job of controlling expenses and trying to get budgets in line and, and that kind of stuff. So we'll see more of that coming here in the spring when we meet for budgets and stuff like that. So. The other one, Brookings Health meeting that night and looking at their, their, their funds and they're doing fine. The COVID funds that they really, they got really helped fill in the gaps. And so we had a meeting with their investment authority also, and that's going well too. Their, their change of the ability to invest their funds in the secondary market has really made a big impact on, on that. It's, it's really something I wish we could do, but obviously we can't. When we look at the money that we have and the amount of interest that we get from that compared to the money that they have and the amount of interest that they get, it's staggering. And I understand there's risk, but I, I just, I wish there was a way. And I know it's not our money, it's taxpayers' money. But I wish there was a way that we could get some better return on $20 million of cash we have sitting there. And, and we're making $2,000 off it, you know, or something like that. It's just, it seems ridiculous to me. But I know it's not something we can change. I think, isn't that more of a state statute or state thing, what we can do with that? But I just, I just noticed the difference between what Brookings Health has been able to do with their cash by investing in it, you know, strategically with an investment, you know, group and the money and the returns that has come back, even the ups and the downs, you know, are weathered. So anyway, I digress. So we will move on from that. But good meeting and a lot of Zoom meetings still going on there. The 24th of February, I had a Zoom meeting with, with Beta. I was a board representative there with the city of Brookings and the, and the Beta Bus Project along with the collaboration with the school. They, previous city meeting, they identified some hurdles that we need to have on that property as far as zoning. The city did go ahead and put a request to change the use of that land through the public use agreement that they have or the overlay of what that land use is. And so that is on the city zoning commission tonight at 5:30. I'll be going there on behalf of Beta also. We're asking for a recommendation to go, to change that from a residential potential use to a medium density commercial, which still would allow some housing in there. But they're looking at that whole corner now. And so we'll see if the commission, that's the first step to changing any zoning. Right now it's ag. And so then it'll be requested to go to commercial. But the problem is if, if the plan says it should be residential, you got to change the plan before you can do the commercial stuff. You got to go through some processes. And so we're starting that. So the, Mike Struck did put that on the agenda. So we appreciated him moving forward with that. And we'll be there tonight to, to talk on anything there for that. And then we had Beta monthly meeting later that day and just gave updates on ridership, funds, you know, CARES funds. And it's very difficult to get your hands around the funding that goes into Beta and when it comes in and the funds that are being used. And their, their budget cycle is different than ours. And it is, it's, they're staying on top of it. And Brenda actually said that they're probably in pretty good shape compared, comparative to some other transit authorities around the state that don't, that have run out of that, their CARES money. So they've been working really hard to conserve that and cut back costs to make that, that money last as long as it, as it can. So. And then the 25th, I volunteered for the POD. We got there at seven in the morning and took off about four o'clock, but it was, it was great. It ran really well. Heard fantastic compliments. The people going through were excited. And, and it was run well. And obviously, this was the first one done in South Dakota. So we really didn't have anything to go off of. We've been practicing this for years. And, and I'm sure there'll be a, a meeting to discuss any changes for the next ones that are coming. But by and large, for never, never having done this before, it went really well. And so I'm really happy with that and all the work that everybody did and that. It was, it was good. So. And then the last one, I was in Aurora last night for an Aurora Town Hall meeting. I was asked to attend as a Realtor, but also as a, as a commissioner to discuss TIFs in, in there. They're discussing, they have a town hall meeting for TIFs, for residential TIFs, potentially residential slash commercial, some area there. There's a request for a TIF. And so they had a town hall meeting to discuss it first. And it'll probably go on the agenda in a couple of months of requesting a TIF. And so we'll end up seeing that down the road. But that's it. Sorry for the long report.
Meeting, the 20th Legislative Forum for District Four and District Seven. Wellness Board meeting and probably kind of like Beta, trying to be careful about how they use their CARES funding and some of the supplemental things that have come in there to keep them, keep them running as smoothly as possible. The 23rd, we had a Detention Center Commissioning kickoff meeting with that team. That will likely be a pretty involved process as it sounded. So the coordination that Chad was mentioning this morning is going to become really important. The 25th, another jail progress meeting. And then Friday, the 26th, had a planning meeting for NACO Next Gen, one of the, one of the subcommittees within NACO prepping for our virtual ledge conference session that we'll be doing for that. So that's the last couple of weeks.
Okay. On the 22nd, lies bid openings at 12 o'clock, Outdoor Venture Advisory Board Meeting along with Commissioner Krogman. He gave details on that. It's, everything's, like we said, everything's going pretty good out there. On the 24th, I had an Extension Board Meeting at noon. 4H has been moving forward pretty good, even due to the COVID restrictions. They're hoping, they're kind of transferring, transferring or transitioning from the orange level to a yellow level. And hopefully by August, September, be able to go to the green level. And by the time of state fair and a little back to somewhat normalcy when the state fair will be held. They, they're, they're planning now and there's planning stages. You know, it's kind of unknown, but they're encouraging kids on their exhibits to kind of limit themselves so they don't overextend themselves. And then basically get told that they can't show their exhibits. So they're moving forward. It sounds like everything's going good. 4H Shooting Sports is coming to an end here shortly. We got a couple of new Extension Board people on board. So it went well. On the 25th, I attended the pod meeting out there, vaccinations. Just a kudos to the Swiftele facility and the staff out there. Everything was set up well and it, it flowed real well. Also, all the volunteers that were out there, it was a great experience in myself. And I'm sure anybody else can say that also, that it was just very appreciated by everybody that attended. Also like to thank Beta. They were actually giving, they gave about 50 people rides out there that day free of charge. I look forward to do it in the future also. It's a great way, if you can't, if you're not very mobile, you can give them a call and they'll, they'll bring you out there. So. That's all I have. Moving on to 12 Executive Session and according to South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2, Province C1 and 4 Personnel and Contract Negotiation. Do I have a motion?
I moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carried. Take a brief break here.